Okay, call the order, roll call please. Okay, Lucy Noll Dilbert.
Here.
Rob Canal.
Present.
Genevieve Brantek.
Here.
Frank Sims.
Here.
Chris Dilbert.
Here.
And Rachel Witzit is here. Okay, so we have a public hearing, Hampton Manor Premier Assistant Living Parcel 2606-33476013 for a lot split request. Would anyone like to speak on that?
I guess, was there any questions you'd like to ask on that?
Would you like to come forward?
I think I would like to, just maybe a couple of questions.
And share the plan and such?
If you'd be so kind to let me, thank you.
Yeah, then if we have any, I'll have you speak now, and then if you have any questions, I'll...
I, what do you have, sorry, thank you.
And then if we have any questions, we'll ask, we'll bring you back up when we do the...
So I think when we originally came in, it was going to be one contiguous property, but because of frontage, the law requires a sidewalk to miller on the 26 mile side. So we had discussed the unusable land, donating it after to a conservatory. And that way, not only would it be insufficient sidewalk, almost 700,000, it would make this side unfeasible to anybody, including us as the current owner, the user of the assisted living. So we narrowed down McComb Land Conservatory, Michigan Land Conservatory, and Michigan Land Preservation as the three top candidates to donate to. And the chain of command, if this goes through and what happens, we all will stick through with the buyer and be the point person. Because I believe power should always be in local government, in state, the further ways. So McComb Land Conservatory would be obviously the path of least resistance with any type of communication municipality, in my opinion, then the Michigan, and then the Michigan. So there were some other state ones that obviously showed great interest. And then when we narrowed this down, we won't do anything until we get a blessing, even if it's not required. But we will give it, and I'd like to look at the 501(c)(3) and see what their expenditures are, that it's not just a top-heavy, you know, money generating thing for executives, but rather the good. Everybody's going to do the same thing with it, and I think the biggest benefit, like I said, the unusable sidewalk, and they won't know how you, on each side of that sidewalk, the, I call them pussy roads for lack of a better word, would grow, I find that dangerous, but then the cost could end up in this. But we wouldn't have to destroy that lands for that sidewalk as well. And when I did talk to your architect, that fellow, tremendous guy, and he thought it was the first solution for everybody. So that's what that process really entailed. But I don't leave a community without a promise, and the promise kept. I've another project that we're in, on 27 mile here, I like the community, I like the whole overall thing. And I have a point I like for projects, I knew I'm only a developer trying to show up without ever stepping on the toes of the forefathers and foremothers and fathers that had a vision for a community. So trying to plug in something that's fair and keep my promises. But I hope you can understand that, and that's kind of where we're coming from.
Okay, thank you very much.
You too.
You know what, and as I say that, we did not do a motion to open a public hearing, or I don't, so...
A motion to open at 7:01 and close at 7:06?
Yeah, but yeah, was there anybody else who wanted to speak on that? Okay, that's okay, I'll go back. Yeah, we did, okay. Is there a second for that motion, a second? Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, approval of the agenda under new business, we're going to add calendar for 2024, discussion, and action. Any public comments on agenda items?
You said that was my run on new business, too?
Yes, please. Oh, yeah, so approval of agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Is there a second for that?
Second, four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, any public comments on the agenda items? Approval of the minutes dated November 7, 2023. Is there a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from November 7, 2023.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain.
I abstain.
Okay. Yeah, motion carried then. Okay, matters for consideration, oh, sorry, communication correspondence workshop, we have nine matters for consideration. New business, temporary batch plant from Mullins New Haven LLC, parcel 06-33301002. Requesting a motion to set a public hearing for special land use.
Motion to set the public hearing for January 2, 2024. Condition that we approve the hearing that day.
At 7 o'clock, right at 7:00.
Is there a second? I did, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Calendar, 2024, discussion and action. I'd like to make two suggestions for the feedback from the commission. July 2, do we want to move that to the following Monday as a holiday?
So I mean, the fourth is on Thursday?
Pulling...
I'm trying.
Fourth is on Thursday, yes.
Yeah, so do we want to keep it, or do we want to move it to the 8th?
I don't have mine yet myself, and I really would like to.
Okay, move it to the 8th.
Rather move it to the following week.
Okay. Is anybody opposed to moving of this meeting to the 8th? Okay. And then the second one, for feedback from the commission, is the November 5, always that's election night, so do you, or election day. Would you like to keep that, or would you also, we can go back one day to the 4th, or up one day, one month, one week, to the 11th, both Mondays? The 4th, the 5th is election day.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can go to the 4th, which is the Monday, or the 11th, which is the Monday after?
Well, the 4th of candidates might be a little bit busy, the night before. I'd say you do it the next week, or, but it's really up to those two, to me. They're the ones that got a run.
It's up to, you know, feedback, anybody?
You gotta buy.
The pilot don't have preference on where they're going.
Or we can keep it on, we can keep it on a day, or?
I think we've had it on, actually, like the last couple years, haven't we?
Yeah, we have, just give the consideration to people who may be busy.
But this time, we actually have our people are running for that office.
So... For anybody?
FYI, again, the 4th is a taping, kind of like...
Oh, okay, thank you. What did she say, the 4th, she's already recording somewhere else? So, okay, so do we just want to go to the 11th? Keep it on the Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll go with that, too.
May 7 is also an election day.
School vote, too, right?
Something to do with the school, yeah.
Different school elections.
Do we...
Do we have school elections this year? I didn't even know we were having school elections.
I don't know if it's convenient, I just know that there's a strong possibility of the school election today. That's up to you guys, I'm not as concerned about that one, because of participation. Okay, so approval of the 2024 Plan and Commission Calendar with the changes made of July 2, 2024 to July 8, 2024, and November 5, 2024 to November 11, actually. Is November 11 a holiday?
It's, yeah, it is the state.
Oh. Okay, we, um, want to go to the...
Can we do the day after?
We could do the 6th.
Yeah, we could do the 6th if everybody's good with that.
Good with me, so Wednesday?
Yeah. Okay, so to November 6, 2025.
Just confirm, you said January 2nd is January, do you?
Nope.
No, January 2nd staying the same.
July 2nd.
We're good in January.
July. Gotcha.
Um, plus the holiday in there, and then the November with the election. Is that good for you?
Yeah.
Okay. So July 2 to July 8, and November 5 to November 6, can I get a motion?
So moved?
Okay, is there a second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
I'm not a holder, but I'm not guaranteed to be here for those things.
Uh, for sure, the participants. I'm already coming in, for me.
Are you literally going to be busy this 7th? I mean, why would you say that, you changed the date?
You don't have to change the date for one person.
Well, what if he decides not to come?
Who, me?
Yeah.
Right here.
That's the same day.
It will be the same.
May 7th.
Oh, that's got nothing to do with him.
No.
Oh, you're working the elections.
Yeah.
You work the elections, yeah.
Oh, I mean...
She'll be recovering soon. Okay. Are you good, Liz?
Yeah.
Okay, old business, Hampton Manor Premier Assistant Living Parcel 2606-33476013, lot split. So we're going to do the lot split first, and then we'll do item 2, their preliminary site plan, which has been revised, if we approve the lot split, to reflect the lots. Okay, so on the first one, does anyone have any questions, concerns in regards to the split?
I'm just going to ask John a question, as far as the amount of land and whatnot. We're okay with the size of the remaining parcel?
Yeah, so based on what was proposed, and the dimensions that are going to be resultant of the apparent parcel, and then once being split, everything will be conforming based on the lot size, dimensions, and everything else. We don't have any concerns on creating any interesting situations there. So I think we're good there.
I do have some questions for the questioners.
I need to.
All right, we'll start with you.
Oh, I have a couple of questions about the conservatory, so. One, what is their responsibility for maintaining it? And can they at some point sell it? Is there a time limit? Do they have to hold on to it for 20 years, 50 years, or?
The title, man, it's like, so, because we're leaving a conservatory in the fact that I don't ever see words.
Is one of these...
Yeah, one of them should be here.
I only have one. There we go. I wanted concern so that she hears it on the video, but we knew we had an extra one back here, we just worked with your one.
I haven't had many, I like when people want me to be louder. Why I could sell this for money. So once it's declared a conservatory, that's needed in perpetuity. So the group knows it's in perpetuity, so if they were to merge, or somebody to take over, it would always have to be used as a conserv. And I do not think under any circumstances, with the high quality of the wetlands of that property, and the cost of to be buy credits, even if you could fight and win, it's economic, you'd like trying to pay $10 million for a corner and put a 711 on it, if you've got approval, and fought, and did everything, so, Congress is still just wouldn't allow for it to happen. The conservatory groups, we will come back to, they don't talk to us, it's done, then they'll talk to us. We will be glad to bring each group to you, and we will not sell it to anybody until you say this is a valid candidate, how they've been represented, they'll tell you how they're going to maintain it. Because I mean, I'd be lying to you if I knew what you could cut down or keep, but these people, they have their money for it, they have the resources, and they, the knowledge and the people. So again, I will not let, and I think I speak, the buyer there, getting on quite well, and working on under a couple of projects I have, but we'll let you have a blessing on who the group is. From the balance sheet as a 501(c)(3) to what they tell you they're going to do with the community. But at the end of the day, it's an unusable piece of land, so how creative can you get with, you know, a product that's Mother Nature, it's just going to be Mother Nature forever? And it'll be in the hands of right people, not of which group there, because they're all highly respected in the list of 10 they worked from, and selected the location base with other criteria. But we'll give you the whole list of 10, and you say, you can make yourself say, I would like to speak to them first, so just because I'm going away after the sale, I'm not going away after the sale. I want to warn your community, want to, whatever the community, at this stage in my life, my word is worth more than a few bucks. So that probably answers that question. If there's any other questions that go off of that, I'd answer.
I just had one, what was, I had McComb, the McComb Conservatory expressed interest?
All of them have, except that they, they want you to have the need to type, they don't, don't show us something on the earth come that hasn't been split yet. Obviously, the, and we have full support from Hackhold, to the World Commission, Viviano, JP Rea, and everybody that this is a good product for the community, they believe, so. And I've sold a lot of other sites to the assisted living community. Their group, Hampton Manor, I think, has about 33 total. I other blew, I said, asked them if you could meet about six weeks ago on another matter. He invited me in. They probably at lunchtime had four helpers for 23 people having lunch at their 15 mile location, they had the best person that played a piano volunteer, you know, like it was, because you see so many things like these Geritol communities where people have cut up the pasture, their prices are fair, I saw some, some plans of, I think, within the $2,700 range, which obviously is expensive, but with food, and, you know, but I'm sure there's something you can do at $6,000, so I'm not saying the range, but I would put my mind there, in that property, so.
Okay, Rob?
I have two questions.
I, yeah, you got to protect the people, so. Okay. My, my concern is still, I know you say sidewalk to nowhere, but it's not going to be a sidewalk to nowhere in the future. I mean, obviously, the, the property to the east will sell eventually, obviously, the west has been developed, and then there would be no way to get across there in the middle. And at some point, 26 mile road is going to take over area of that property when they put, put a wider road in. I mean, you know, you hear lots of stories of what that road might be someday, but it's going to get, have to get wider at some point. So at that point, does that sidewalk become the responsibility of the village to put in? When that, when that road gets put in there, so that's a big concern of mine, is that we're buying off and getting stuck with having to develop.
I guess the answer to that question is, at that stage in time, you probably would go after a grant if that happened, and the road, the road commission would, would think. Because at the end of the day, if we can't get that severance, the cost of that sidewalk makes this piece useless, like we couldn't add $700,000 to a 60-bed project and make it economically feasible, so there's no way a current property owner, a future property owner can ever pay for that sidewalk.
You're saying this sidewalk is 700,000?
It was 673,000 or something, the last quote we had had. So like I say, at some form of time, if the government want a sidewalk at whatever level, for expansion of the road, you would probably fight for a contract that where they do it, but wetlands credit, the cost will, because wetland credits have to be bought. And it's about $135,000 per acre to buy a wetland credit, because you're buying one and a half to one acre, so it's just, that's, and then you've got spread footings and so much in that soft soil and disruption, that there's just no way any property current or capitalist model buyer will ever be able to put a sidewalk in. Secondly, the wetland growth pattern could quickly start to encompass the cut up lands that we're dealing with now. So it might just be, we at least should get it now, really get the sidewalk on this side of the project. So I, there's an immediate benefit that might not be advantageous for years from now, in my opinion.
The, what does a conservancy do with this property? Because, I mean, you can't...
I think a lot of them use it for studies, insects, birds, they, they bring in universities, and they might be studying a certain, so if a university from what we've had in the past, so if a university had a need that they were studying a certain type of rough pattern, they'd send a certain, like, you know, the conservatives, who has a certain type of soil condition, who has an annual rainfall, who has a drainage moisture, these people, it becomes a science to these people, because they are scientists in their own way.
Because there's not going to be able to be any parking?
Ever, not, never.
For them to park, to go in there?
No.
Is there actual animals listed as part of the ecosystem there, or?
They'll identify them at some time, but really not a need to identify now in this type of thing, because if you're making a conservatory, if we were trying to take it and develop it, and, and fight with the EQ, and challenge it, and try to buy it, things which you couldn't win, and the cost could hit us at the same time, then you would identify disruption. There's no, there's no eco-disruption of this evidence.
Then my last thing, I guess, would be for John, with this, or can we do this on a contingency, to where this property doesn't split unless it goes to a conservancy? Because if we split the property, you keep it and say, well, you know, I don't want this damn thing, I'm just not going to pay the taxes on it.
And, and foreclose on it. I would think that, that we could, if, as long as we made, like maybe you said, we have within six months of closing half to donate it to a, six months of split, half to donate it to acceptable source, acceptable to you, I think that's one of the fairer.
I just thought that at the back of our lap as a piece of property.
And, and I would respect that from the same token. But the good thing is, these people are standing in line to get property like this. So, but again, I'd vote for you for what you just said, I'm not voting in the community, but I respect that. And I'm the kind of guy that's going to keep my word anyway, but why not hold us to it?
Yeah, I got a whole to do.
Like Ronald Reagan, say, cross but verify?
Yes, I'll go with that. So I'm just worried that, I just don't want it to end up back in the village's lap as being our...
Yeah, 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 I've seen situations like this, where you can say, look, there's a 10 or 15,000 dollar bond, or agreement, if it's not done within that period of time, it's demolished, or that thing.
Okay, I have to ask, if this goes through with a contingency, I have to go to John. Where does that put us with all the other actions that follow? Because that would be the site plan, would be contingent of the approval and the contingency, and then next week's planning would also be, or next week's council.
I think one thing where I'm not sure on how to define it on, is if this is something that can even be conditioned.
Okay.
Because, yeah, thinking out loud, like, I don't know if you could say, we're going to condition the split on what you then privately decide to do with your property and put it into conservancy. I don't know if you can necessarily put that step into that, because lot split is kind of separate to that action. I think at the end of the day, too, it's just, if that is what the direction you're going, let's get, I'm just talking a lot, if that's the direction you plan on going, is that conservation route, doing easement, putting it into conservancy, whatever is you plan on doing, doing with that, let's see if it does go into a situation where somebody wants to develop it down the line, then that sidewalk situation that pops it again, and gives you a sidewalk, you have a site plan, but it doesn't go that route, is conserved, and develops and so forth, or whatever it's going to be. So I think there's, there's really no, I don't necessarily see the downside in either situation.
I think the point, I think the point of fairness here is that the sidewalk's going to be done on this side, and generate tax revenue now, because we're moving forward immediately with the approval, if we're so gracious to see our cause. So we know that's going to be done, and if this doesn't get approved, the whole thing just implodes, and it becomes one big wetland that you're probably going to get back, you know, be honest with you, but there's no use for it, if we, economic conditions, and then it would be that the, the leisure of the county, whoever took it back, to find the conservatory then. But again, in my humble opinion, whether it's, they're not going to hope to trim the trees and, like, something like that, whether I own that, or they own that, or the conservatory owns that, it doesn't make any difference.
That's not really what I'm worried about.
I think one thing to consider, Rob, is that if they do default, it doesn't automatically come back to us, we have to buy the property back from accounting. So it's not just automatically for villages again, if they default on taxes, it goes to accounting, and then it goes for sale. And if somebody buys it, and I think to his, to John's point, if somebody else buys it and wants to develop it, then we can do the sidewalk in the future. So if it does come back on tax rules, and somebody can buy it, the sidewalk can then be enforced at that time.
I would imagine, too, with 26 mile being that little county jurisdiction, if they weren't doing wide, you know, road construction projects with a 26 mile, there's going to be some type of connection, project associated with sidewalks and non-motorized, because that's typically a requirement in most of the situations.
I mean, 24 mile, they drove over all circles, or 23 mile, they took down all the banks along the road, I mean, they're all gone, and there's a sidewalk.
But the county has that ability.
Yeah.
Whereas the private developers got to go through Eagle and all the other steps to...
And Eagle, they could argue with me if I was going to build a, an emergency shelter for ambulance, or something that was needed, and they would say, we can't say that, but if municipalities, we need it as a sidewalk, or we need it as a road expansion, they differ quite, quite quickly, the municipalities, and even less situations of benefit, I think, there are many times, but I guess maybe an expanded road is, but this is the main argument going through there, this is, McComb County and everything else is not going to expand that road and leave a, a piece of sidewalk from here, there, everywhere that goes along, I think, historically. But, but again, the, there is no feasible way for a...
For profit.
For profit, to be able to build a sidewalk. And then we'll just, then it was, the wetlands will come here, or we'll just abandon that piece, and it goes back to you. So jobs, place for people to live, and probably $150,000 to $180,000 tax from the village and the county here with the new product that's going up, by an acclaimed developer who has 33 of these, it's quite recognized, with a ranch model product, does nice load, roofing, you've seen the plans, and I think we've bought, for that property, for any kind of development, we've brought the best solution possible. It's not a dispensary for marijuana, and maybe that's fine because it's legal, I'm just not that kind of person, and it's not a high tragic thing, because people don't drive, you know, you got guests coming and staff, but there's not a lot of staff, so it's not going to create a whole blood and traffic issue. It's going to create jobs, and it's going to allow mom and dad to stay close by to people in the community, and it's a thing, it's an asset to, I think this is the most, this community, and I'm not trying to sell myself on this project now, but this community is a grassroots community, I do a lot of land development, my core clients, multi-homes, and I've told them, this is a community, there are schools, everything else, and I think there needs to be, if people really knew the new, what new haven is... And I think there needs to be, if people really knew the new, what new haven is, and the people, the community, the amenities, the location, that a public marketing campaign. You say, we, we have done projects before, like in the brokerage business where I had a show on CBS years ago and luxury living enough in Detroit, and it can be done. And I think that twenty-five thousand dollars produces a show. And after I'm gone, whether I'm in here or not, if you call me and say I need five thousand dollars for you and get anybody else that you think, well, think this was a good idea, I could raise half that twenty-five thousand to promote that community, uh, this community. It's the right community for growth, for family, and I, if I get shot down, I don't know why, but if I do, that's fine, it's still the right community.
So John, are we able to look at that and still approve this at the same time? And then, I don't know, maybe that also puts a fire under these conservancy territories to get this thing done quick and let this whole deal, let them goodbye.
They're not going to move fast, until, until it's a severed lot, it's all entitled, they're not going to do it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm saying to approve the lot split.
Okay.
With your caveat, you know, that you're putting it in a conservancy order.
I don't think we can do a lot split with the, with the condition that it goes to.
No, because I still have the property, he can change his mind if he wants.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what.
But if it's as unbuildable as he says it is, then he's got an option but to donate it.
Right.
I, I will tell you one thing, we can put it in writing, we can stamp it, we can seal it. I'm, here's my word, you can call me at any time, day or night, after this is done, and say, where are we at? Where are we delivering? Showing the other community that I've done other things and I love the promise. And I don't leave when this, I leave the title on me of closing. I am here to get this finished, get a nice product up here with quality people, tax base included, benefit the community, and hold your hand till the other side's done. Even though that holding hand is just delivering the facility that me, your god, can't do anything differently.
Okay, very good, Rachel. Okay, anybody else?
I'm good.
Okay, I just want to, Smer, could it be with us tonight? So just note for the record that there were no engineering objections. Um, this is back, I think the email went out back at the beginning of November. But no engineering objections, and then he referred everything over to planning. Okay, so is there any further discussion to be had on this? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the lot split for Hampton Manor.
I second.
All in favor?
Should we do a roll call on that?
Should be roll call.
Yeah. I'll roll call.
Kristolberg?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Johnny Brodick?
Yes.
Lucy Nolan Gilbert?
Yes.
Rob Pinnell?
Yes.
And Rachel Witzel, is a yes.
Motion carried. Okay, so now is the re-presentation of the Hampton Manor Premier Assisted Living Parcel, two-six-zero-six-three-three-four-seven-six-zero-one-three preliminary site plan review. So, um, there have been no noted changes to this, which we already approved, aside from the lot split, so the downsized of the initial property. John, do you want to speak on that?
Um, yes, essentially an identical site plan as what was originally proposed. Uh, like you said, other than the, the law split scenario, the change in the overall dimension of the site. Um, then that in turn then leads to lot coverage changes and everything else because of that. But, um, the only thing that was, that was different that I noticed was the loading zone um, now has screening and is located on the side there and is compliant with the zoning ordinance regulations. Um, but other than that, anything else that was reviewed and proposed and the site plan is compliant with the ordinance, so we don't have any objections to what was presented.
Wasn't there something to trash? Is that?
Um, that was addressed as well too, with the, the screening and everything else.
Wasn't there something with the entrance? Wasn't it wider?
Oh, yeah. Um, I'm not sure with that one. That was, could be a surrender, if that was something that was going to be, uh.
I could have sworn it wasn't, was it off or did it a boulevard or something?
A boulevard? Fire wanted two entrances and egresses?
Yeah.
I can call, call Smer in.
Yeah.
But, but the.
I think I can answer that.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Evan Priest, I'm a civil engineer representing Hampton Manor people tonight. Uh, the change that we made at the entrance was a subsequent, the meeting we came to in July, uh, I believe at the time of an outstanding comment from the fire department regarding one means of access to the site. Uh, so we, we opted to provide a boulevard entrance, which in my experience, many different other places fits the bill for two points of access to a site rather than putting two full entrances out onto, uh, on the road, which I believe might be objected to by NDAC as, uh, one of their stated goals of access management is minimize the number of curb cuts on their roads. And so we think this boulevard entrance is, uh, the decision to give the fire department two points of entry, but.
Oh, there's your drawings.
Kind of, uh, you know, leave it as one, one point of access inside the entrance of, uh, NDAC.
Did you watch this?
Um, please look at the plan that we had last month, when there is a boulevard entrance on there.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we want to call Smer? When?
I don't think so. Me anyways, it's on the plan here.
Yeah, it's, I just wanted to make sure that it was addressed, so.
I don't really see the loading zone changes or anything, but everything else looks the same.
Have an updated landscape plan here, if you'd like to look at it.
Did that change?
Just in terms of what John mentioned. But the screen is on the landscape.
Yeah.
I would love to see it. That was one of my concerns was along the, the west side of the property. To cover as much of that mess over there as possible with your. That really looks like a whole lot more, but you may want to put a lot more screening on that side of your.
My, my, I don't fear it.
I'd get in that view if I get there, that's all I'm saying.
Hey, you're right, it's screening is more for us than anything, you're right about it.
Yeah, I want a conservatory view. My kids did say that they were. This is all my house, that's big, man.
You know what, there's big problems, huge requirements, so you hopefully live long enough to count.
Yeah.
Well, with the stats, they, this group fills with quality, but if you go inside one, you'll, you'll see this yourself. So it wouldn't be bad actually, if you have to make some choices.
But if you want to, you could do additional approval.
He's got something.
Okay. I assume conditional.
Yeah.
John, or Smer, can I please have your site plan? Just so that.
If you had any.
I think.
He didn't.
I think if we're approved, yeah, for preliminary state, the meeting is scheduled for thirteen, called for thirteen. Um, I think I could speak on this over his behalf, that if anybody wanted to walk through the facility prior to the meeting on next Tuesday, I could set up a weekend for lunch and walk through fifteen mile site at Druxman Kelly and fifteen mile on next Monday, prior to it, if you want to come as a group, individuals. At the end of the meeting, I'll give my number. Rebecca has all of my information, because I amended her with emails. She's quite responsive, uh, to everything. So if in fact, anybody wants to see it, touch it, feel it, prior to a final vote on the approval, we'll accommodate you.
I went there, it's very nice.
We did, we did make that happen. I've done, I've done eight or nine of these with these people and they do, they do, I allow people from councils and land missions or chooers, so everybody's, they put their line of energy in there.
I have it here. It's kind of lengthy, um.
Did he have any comments on it?
He does, yeah. Um, I'm waiting to go. Peter MacRae said, and I sent it off with all my comments. So, um, there's a letter, um, I can forward it out to everybody. Um, proposal on split to be approved, recommendation and revision. So here, I'll just send it to everybody so we can take a quick minute.
And that's the last bit, I guess, um.
This is on the lot split, yeah.
Okay, well, that's going to prove all of it.
Or sorry, this is on the subject, my, yeah. Or I can just read it.
Read it.
Just read it, it's lengthy, so you know.
I appreciate your warning. Oh, it's a long chat.
Attached comments are not to be construed as approval, and you've received a copy of this as well. I really did want to. Um, Hampton Manor, a new new site plan review. General, please have T C E C review number N H two-three-one-zero-four placed on the lower right corner of the cover sheet. The proposed activities include a new building, related paving, grading, and storm drainage improvements. When the applicant resents its plans for the site, they shall be complete so as to avoid repetitive plan reviews due to lack of information obtained by the designer or by the design engineers, the village requirements, which are available online. An existing twelve inch water main along the east side of Main Street is available to serve this site. The onsite eight, eight inch water main extension with hydrants and fire department connection F T C is required for the proper coverage. All onsite water main extensions shall be subject to review and approval by the village. Due to the length of the proposed water main extension, electric diameter may be, may be required. The village D P W, um, village department shall be contacted regarding all water main extensions, connections, and charges. The village fire department shall be consulted regarding access, fire lanes, and hydrant requirements. Sanitary sewer, an existing fifteen inch sanitary sewer along east side of Main Street is available to serve this site. The required minimum public sanitary sewer size is ten. The village D P W shall be contacted regarding all sewer extensions, connections, and charges. Any onsite sewer extension shall be subject to review and approval by the village. Paving, all onsite paving shall consist of a twenty-eight foot, sixteen foot for roadway traffic, white paved roadway from back to back of, of curb with six inch thick concrete curves around the entire perimeter constructed to the McCombe County Department of Roads M C D R standards. All onsite paving may be either an eight inch thick concrete with six inch aggregate base or an equivalent, uh, uh, I'm not even going to try, bituminous. And aggregate base section constructed to M C D R standards. All drive shall accommodate a minimum of forty-two foot radius. Fire truck turning access, A A S H T O city bus provide turning maneuver simulation for the entire site. The plans do not show that the required five foot wide sidewalk along Main Street and twenty-six mile road public sidewalk shall be provided along all road entire franchises per village and M C D R standards. Um, grading, is this, as I'm reading this, is this?
That would be the last one.
That's what I, yeah, this is what he sent me though.
The date?
Yeah.
That's me.
Yeah, this is what he sent me. Sorry for that, and he did not send me. I don't think. I thought he did, because I thought I remembered reading it, but I can't get into my computer because it's not working.
You know, now that you say it, one of the emails, I think that had your information in it, had Smer's letter.
Yeah, it was like.
Attention, but not attached.
It's May thirty, yeah.
So maybe he sent that to you if I don't recover. Or do we do it based on his, if he has issues, then put the brakes on, send it back?
No, it's because.
So we can prove it now?
Oh, um.
You're saying approve it now, let Smer, if he has an issue that has not been resolved, then.
He got between now and next Tuesday, though.
He can either fix it or send it back to us.
I'm just going to call him in.
Did you have a call?
I'm not sure, he said he's a little over call.
Hello?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Smer, you're speaker. Um, can you give your feedback on the, um, proposed site plan with the lot split?
Uh, yeah, I sent you the email. Uh, it's basically the same comments from, uh, from the first site plan review, except for the twenty-six mile road, uh, sidewalk requirements. If they did the split, they don't have drainage on that property. So that's the only difference. All the other items are, are the same.
So then it were resolved yet with the new plan?
Uh, we typically, um, don't get to the technical review until the site plan passes by the planning commission. So, uh, they may or may have, uh, updated, you know, some requirements, but we don't get into all these details um, until they change stage, which is after the site plan approval.
Right. Okay, so we can approve it based on the requirements of the engineering, the planning?
Correct. It's always your approval, always contingent upon engineering, the fire, and building.
Throw D P W in there?
Uh, yeah, I'll review it's, uh, panic with the D P W.
Does anybody else have any questions for Smer? Okay, Rob, you good?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Smer.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's a wrap.
That's a move on.
Motion?
Motion to approve Hampton Manor Premier Assisted Living Parcel number twenty-six dash zero-six dash three-three dash four-seven-six dash zero-one-three dash, does that change with the lot split?
Um, we did discuss that, a new one would be issued.
A new one will be issued with the split off parcel, but this one will be the same.
Okay. Uh, preliminary site plan review contingent upon the planner, the engineering, fire, and D P W approvals as presented.
Okay, is there a second? Second? Okay, roll call. Oh.
I have a question. It's really not contingent upon.
That's the word he used.
Well, he did, but he said that the engineering, it's contingent upon the engineering.
We, yeah, once we approve it.
Right, yeah, it goes through that.
Then, then it goes to that.
But there's nothing they have to approve for us to.
Right, exactly, there's nothing.
Okay.
Okay, are you good?
It's off our plate, but if their contingencies are with the department, it's not, right?
Yes.
May I?
Sure.
Um, his comments, and I think we, I don't want to speak for him, but typically at this point, if he has comments that are what I think he, he was trying to say, the kind of nuts and bolts comments, we, we will have to get final approval from all of those, uh, parts of the village prior to any kind of construction and getting any kind of permits. And we intend to compile up all of that stuff before that point. So those comments, we intend to address with our construction plans to move forward with if we get the site plan approved.
And that's what Smer was, that's what his contingent upon was all those approvals after ours.
Again, I might want to jump in too, that how discussions go, I think we all agree on the same thing, that to, to preliminary approval condition is, condition comes after the approval, like chicken and egg. Thanks.
Good?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, so motion on the table, Rob's motion, seconded by Lucy. Are we good with the wording on the motion? Okay, um, roll call.
Uh, Rob Pinnell?
Uh, yes.
Lucy Nolan Gilbert?
Yes.
Craig Sims?
Yes.
Kristolberg?
Yes.
Johnny Brodick?
Yes.
Rachel Witzel, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, so that'll be, just so you know, um, next, on next Tuesday is.
Only the lot split has to go before.
Right.
Well, there's like.
Yeah, yeah, you're good, so the lot split will be, um, oh, you know what? Did we have to put, I'm going to have to go back, because that motion needs a condition of the lot split by.
Council, law council.
Okay, so rescind?
Well, can we just amend it?
Can we add? Can we amend it? Yeah. Okay.
Amend to add, uh, per council approval, at whatever Tuesday you need it.
Okay, and then.
Per council approval of the lot split.
Of the lot split.
Of the lot split. And then, do we need to do a motion on amending? I think we do. So a second on that?
That was Lucy, I think.
Lucy.
She had to approve the amendment.
Okay, and all in favor of the amendment?
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay.
I, I will first, thank you. And I just sent an email to Rebecca and John, because the only two emails I had, asking Rebecca tomorrow morning if she could circulate my email and contact information. I'm, I'm a five a.m. amid a die and, uh, Monday, 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 basically. So please call if anybody wants. call, if anybody wants to attend, walk through, next Monday, different time or you will accommodate you, you have my number. If this gets past the finish line, we move to closing the next couple weeks, or we can have, let's do it. I'm not leaving this community and this deal and that property or anything, but I made a promise here today, I'm committed to moving forward. I hope you find out at the end, my word is better than somebody else's ink, and I thank you for all you've done, you have a wonderful community, we have another project that's in motion here, and, John, you called me, you called me, this is pretty hard, because we should put a hole in here or something. Thank you, everybody, you've done a great job, and see you next Tuesday.
Thank you. Okay, uh...
Do you have free agency?
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, planners report? Uh, I guess I would just ask, um, can you explain to the commission?
Oh, that's true.
The batch plant.
Yeah, so, the, uh, those batch plant, batch plants that's being proposed for a site, uh, twenty-six mile, um, it's a temporary batch plant. A batch plant is typically something that works in the area of concrete or asphalt processing, um, for a local infrastructure project, um, whether it's a road or a certain sewer system or something that's related to concrete work, um, that's what the temporary site like that typically will then work on. So, it'll be, what you typically see, the concrete site where you have the long column and your loading area, and having a circulation drive for the trucks to load up the concrete, that they leave up, and then they go to where the site is that they're working on primarily, um, which the site plan should, uh, identify what project it is, what timeframe that's going to be worked on for, um, as well as all their mitigation strategies for dust, noise, light, um, and potential byproducts of the process, so.
If, if, uh, the site plan that I saw, it appears that it's on the, uh, Basic Metals property?
That's what it looked like to me.
Yeah, it's right next to railroad, um, they're using a shared access to get to the site, because there's really no direct access from twenty-six, because it comes to a point, uh, to just exit itself.
And...
Oh. I can see that, okay. It was okay, speaking?
Sure.
Uh, so, yeah, there, there, so the, it's a separate parcel in Basic Metals, um, but there is a shared, there's an easement agreement between the two properties, um, for the, for the drive into that.
And is it patented for the work that's being done in Art Lake?
I don't know.
Yeah, it wasn't identified on site.
Because I don't see any other projects happening this close to us.
St. Clair County is what John, but that was, um, it was a...
Yes, yes. Yeah, I don't know, they're going to need to put that on the site plan in terms of what project this is servicing, um, because, yeah, from my knowledge, there's nothing specific that I know that they're working on, just some ideas and...
I mean, they were doing the roads in North Bay, but they're, I don't know, they're sixty, seventy percent done.
Would it be appropriate to, to have Becky reach out to them for more specifics, or can you?
Um, it's already my review.
Oh, okay.
That they should be receiving, and it's, it's a site plan requirement, temporary batch plan, so they'll have to put that, that information in there as well as the timeframe of their, the, the site.
Okay.
Really concerns me, really concerns, well, it, it doesn't really concern me because of the location, but because of the history of that property, it concerns me.
Sometimes temporary is, I'm not being temporary.
Ah... Yeah, that's my definition, it's temporary, you know?
It's temporary.
I'm here temporarily, but I'm hoping to make it, you know, sixty, seventy years.
This is December, and now you want to put in a temporary batch plant?
Yeah, especially when I, I don't see anything coming close by.
Yeah.
Unless, do you see, have you heard of anything potentially coming close by?
So, the only other, the only thing that I can think of is that I believe they are planning on repaving Grashit, uh, in Lennox Township next year, uh, because I do remember that they were, there were some concerns about, um, repaving right in front of Lennox Township's municipal building, uh, around election time.
But that's the next one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and we have Ajax right here.
Right.
Maybe it's with a roundabout, twenty thirty.
Yeah, there you go.
We're going to temporarily get ready now.
Okay. So, any practice in St. Clair County?
My other question on this, just based on this, this drawing that, you know, this little drive going out to Basic Metals, is this agreement going to, since we're doing that, fix the way the front of Basic Metals looks in attachment to the road and the, you know, real cement versus just keep pulling all that crap off on the twenty-six mile road that comes, comes there? I mean, it seems like if that's the deal that's going on here, that there should be some entrance improvements there to the front of, uh, the property, that's my test, that's I just, if there... I'm sure they're not doing this for free, so...
I imagine those are...
Would we get that in?
We did nothing.
But I imagine those are the things that we can address when it comes to these site plan reviews, Smerce's comments, and we can, um, share our, uh, concerns or things that we've, we've spotted in the site plan, and things that we want to see improved, um, but, yeah, I mean, you'll, you'll look at my site review, that there's a number of things that will need to be addressed and updated on the site plan, because it needs to be revised, because the language I read just says it's aggregate, I didn't see the word cement or...
Particularly the batch plant is cement, because they're remote, or they can be.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think I have a problem with it, if it is temporary, making the aggregate part, the road aggregate in that other section, but for the entrance here...
I think we have to, I don't think we can be really discussing any discussion at this point, um, just more, so explanation from John as to what its function is, so, good? Okay, anything, you have nothing else, John, at this point? Okay, uh, call from the table?
Public comments on non-agenda items?
Oh, gosh, public comments on non-agenda items?
You got it.
Oh, thank you.
He's going to watch it.
Joe? Now you make him see. Thank you. Oh, I did, I hooked over, right? I look for you. He said, and, um, call from the table? None, and, uh, motion to adjourn at seven fifty-nine.
So, who?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, sorry.